Okay, everybody, welcome to the December 14th, 2020 regular meeting of the Borough Council. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, pursuant to public law in 1975, Chapter 231. Said notice was sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on December 3rd, 2020, posted in Borough Hall and on file in the Clerk's Office. All requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. To the republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Delia?
Here.
Councilman Hirsch?
I'm here.
Councilman Pagel?
Here.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Here.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Here.
Council President Kozkowski?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here. And before we move on with the agenda session portion of the meeting, I just want to say a few words, and I don't know if my fellow council members would like to join me, but today is Todd Pagel's last regularly scheduled council meeting. I say regularly scheduled, because who knows if we have to have some sort of meeting between now and New Year's typically, we don't, but Todd has been tireless. I mean, you know, I know that he would have liked to have stayed with us maybe forever, but Todd has a higher calling. I mean, for those of you who don't know, Todd serves our country in the Coast Guard. And you know, the one thing that strikes me about Todd is that every time you see him, he is unfailingly positive. He's always got something positive to say. He's always enthusiastic, and it's incredibly refreshing. And so I just, you know, you don't get that a lot in government. People with smiles on their faces and who are enthusiastic and exciting. And there will be an energy lost in our council chamber this coming year and in the future without him here. So I just want to thank Todd personally. I have learned a lot from Todd, frankly, about pedestrian safety, about bicycle safety, and just about infrastructure and transportation. And you know, Todd has really, you know, we had a conversation, Todd, I hope I'm not breaching your confidence here, but we had a conversation outside of Borough Hall, maybe after a meeting a couple, maybe last month or whenever it was. And I looked at him and I said, you know, this is weird, like you're not going to be here. And he seemed like he was, for the first time, that glimmer, right? The enthusiasm was sort of gone for a second. And he said, sort of concerned about what his legacy would be. And at that moment, the parking lot, I tried to assure him that not only was he a positive force when he was here, but he was an incredibly influential force. Because you know, it does, it's not the work of any one person here at all. It's a sort of a collective effort, and we all have to work together. And there were a lot of things that Todd helped us see during his time here. And I'm deeply appreciative. You know, government is not the most efficient process in the world. It can be slow, it can be deliberative, it can be painstakingly slow, right, Todd? But it works. And it works because Todd got a lot done here, even if he doesn't think he did. He got a lot done in these years. And I think his legacy is in all of us and our continued dedication to the issues that he focuses on. So I don't know if anyone, Council President, you want to join me?
I do. So I didn't know Todd until he joined council, right? I didn't know, some of you might have known him before, but I did not know him. And everybody was like, you know, oh, you know, he's a great guy, he's a great guy. I never really expected his level of energy and dedication that he brought to the council. And one thing I'd like to thank you for, Todd, is for always keeping in the forefront for us environmental concerns. I think it's something that gets pushed to the wayside, it's shutted, you know, to the wayside, because everything else seems so pressing. But you understand that it is pressing to take a look at what we're doing environmentally. And I know you feel like maybe we haven't gone far enough, but I want you to know that you've given me the energy to, like, right now, I'm pursuing vendors for electric garbage trucks, and that's because of you. And I swear to God, I never thought I'd be looking into garbage trucks ever, but I'm doing them, I'm like working with the DPW in Jersey City, because they just acquired five, which I learned from you. So even though you didn't get the electric garbage truck, you definitely sparked the fire that's going to keep me working to make sure that as we move forward, we're going to be taking the environment into consideration when we're making decisions, especially about large purchases. So I want to thank you for that personally, because although it's an issue that's important to me, I never really learned how to work it. And I feel like you've, you know, led that challenge, and I'm gonna take your lead and I'm gonna follow you. And I also really want to thank you for your dedication to bike walk stuff. You know, that means something to me. You were supportive of me when I was working on the 25 mile per hour, and I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss having your voice on the council, so, but thank you so much for your dedicated service, I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes, I just want to wish Todd, you know, the best, you know, during all his future endeavors. We both came from the Shea Tree Commission, so I kind of already knew all about Todd's hidden talents with his interest in the environment. And I have to really thank him for introducing me to a really wonderful fellow Brooklynite, Matutian Laurie LaFever. Todd brought her Girl Scout troop to plant a tree at Olmeyer Park several years ago, and I made a good friend in Matutian that maybe I wouldn't have met because of Todd. So Todd, I thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm trying to go in seniority over here. Councilwoman Rubin?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to wish you good luck, Todd. I know as someone who has come and gone from the council in the past, having served on the council and then moving back into being a private Matutianite is a unique opportunity to be able to accomplish great things. Having had the experience of sitting on the council, learning the processes of how things work and how they don't work, and then being able to bring that knowledge back to the community is an invaluable experience. So I know you're going to do great things with that, and I wish you success in everything that you do. It was fun to sit next to you up there, and you brought some youth to the council. I used to be the young councilperson, and then you guys came along. So I know we'll be seeing you doing great things, and I appreciate your attention to accessibility issues and always asking good questions and asking for input, and you'll be missed.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Delia?
Todd, well, thanks for leaving, first of all, because now I'll be the youngest on the council, I appreciate that. It's my complete and utter honor to serve with you, Todd. I learned so much from you on climate, on, I think we learned a lot from each other on housing, you know, policy and issues, obviously transportation related. I could always count on you to have sent me a text or DM when I wake up in the morning to have it waiting for me on my phone, some blog post or a new study that came out, or some cool thing someone else is doing in some other city. So the mayor kind of touched on it, I know, this is tough, this can be frustrating, especially for someone that's so passionate like you are. So, you know, obviously, we always want to move faster, we always want to do more, right? And I know you wish you'd done more, but I'm gonna do my best to keep it up and keep pushing for you. So thank you for your leadership on all those issues that you cared so much about. Thank you for your service in the borough, thank you for your service in the country. Thanks for being my sounding board, and thanks for being my friend, dude. So I fully expect to keep getting those DMs every night.
All right, Councilman Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. Todd, it's been a wonderful experience working with you, serving with you. I want to thank you for everything you've done, you've led by example, you lead by your conscience, that's wonderful. And I want to thank you for your service to the country and for helping me with my first couple of years. I'm going to continue our fight to go electric, to do what's right for the environment and to do what's right for Matutian. So thank you again for your service, and don't start crying.
You can see the passion in your face now. He's not just saying he's sad, he loves this place. And Todd, you know, you don't have to make your remarks now, you can make them later. This is, you know, obviously, this would be the type-
I gotta change my speech, because you guys all said such nice things, I gotta take out some of the bad stuff.
But you've got, this is the type of night that we've all afterward go out together for a beer, obviously, that's not going to happen tonight, but let's rain check that as a crew, let's promise that when things are okay again, we can do that. And obviously, this isn't the end, Todd. I mean, you're on the council is one thing, but you know, we're still going to rely on you for issues here and there, especially the ones that you've so passionately emphasized during your time. So Todd, I don't know if you want to say something now, or you want to wait till later, it's up to you.
I'll wait till later, Mayor, that was too, I wasn't expecting that, and it was really touching, so I'll take a couple ordinances to compose myself, and then I'll save it for the public comment, save it for my, but thank you all, that means so much, it really, really does, and I'll say more later, thank you.
Okay, okay, Councilman. All right, at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the agenda session.
I move to open the agenda session.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Todd, go for it.
This is the last one I second.
All right.
That was the first one I've ever done.
It's Todd's night tonight.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think there are some matters of the agenda session I heard through the grapevine, is that accurate, Council President?
I do have at least one thing to add, I mean, I have something to add. I'd like to add a report about the EMS by Pete Fairclough.
Where are we putting that?
I think we should do it maybe just before public comment, so he can get back to doing whatever he needs to do.
Okay.
Is that okay?
No, absolutely no problem. Anything else for the agenda?
Actually, Mayor, I have just two brief things, and it's less of an agenda session, but more just of a clarification for the public as well. There are two ordinances on tonight for second reading, actually, there are more than two, but two relating to this discussion that require amendments or, there's been amendments that were recommended relating to two of the ordinance. One of them is 2020-21, it's the ordinance for the redevelopment plan for Block 117, Lot 93. And I can let Ms. Givens explain that further, but then there's also an amendment relating to 2020-19, and that was the tree ordinance. They're minor amendments, they don't require, they don't alter, substantially alter the intent or material alter the ordinances, but I just wanted to point that out. So procedurally, what I would recommend is prior to the motion to adopt on second reading and prior to going to the public hearing on it, that there be a motion by the council, if so appropriate, or if they so wish, to amend the ordinance and to adopt the ordinance as amended, and then have it go to the public hearing, so the public hearing can discuss any issues relating to the amendments. From a practical aspect, you may just want to wait until we get to those ordinances on the agenda, and then I can explain the minor change in 2020-19, and Ms. Givens, I believe, is prepared, or Jay or Chris, the minor change. And frankly, I believe Ms. Givens' change is more of a clarification than even a change.
Okay, but is it, so Council, just to be clear, it's whoever's making the motion will just make the motion as amended, in other words, referencing what either you or Ms. Givens will be saying at some point related to these particular-
Well, yeah, no, it would be a motion to amend, and a motion to amend the ordinance and to adopt as amended.
Motion to amend the ordinance, so it's one, but it's, so it's one singular-
You could do it separately, or you could do it all as one. I mean, I mean, you could just do a motion to amend and then have that approved, and then a motion to adopt as amended, or you could do a motion to amend, I mean, and adopt.
The most important thing is Linda, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I mean, I'll probably screw it up, but I'll help.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, all right, good. So anything else for the agenda session? All right, do you have a motion to close the agenda session?
I move to close the agenda session.
Is there a second?
Todd?
Oh, I'm doing all of them, oh, second, second.
Yeah.
I'm doing all second, is that-
My kids are screaming in the background, I don't know if you want that on this.
That's okay, my puppies are making noise, they're chewing my hair over here.
All right, so we've got a second, so you got the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now we're done with the agenda session, we're going to move on. We are now going to hear from Peter Fairclough from the Emergency Management. Peter?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Peter Fairclough, I live at Three Go Go Place in Matutian, I'm the president of Matutian EMS. I'm here tonight to present our report for December 2020. Normally, I'll let one of our cadets give the report, but this is not a normal time. Our last report is in October, we have not taken the COVID-related calls since our last report, we've just been lucky. Every hospital in Middlesex County has been on diver at some point in the last three weeks. Fortunately, not all of them at the same time. This last weekend, JFK, which is the nearest hospital to Matutian, was on diver for 24 hours straight. What that means is that they're requesting ambulances, do not bring patients there and take them somewhere else. There have been occasions when every hospital in some counties in New Jersey have been on diver. That means that patients have been transported for extreme distances. This continues to be a challenging time for a volunteer organization. We have had two squad members contract the virus, both from community spread and not from first aid calls. Overall, our call volume has been slightly lower than this stage at last year. We continue to get help from the community, the Olive Press Eatery has not charged us for meals since February, and we recently got $900 of coupons for other local restaurants from the MDA. Our recruitment has been going well, and we actually have a small waiting list. We have five new members who will take the MT exam in December or January. Our concern now is financial. We have not been able to rent our hall since March, which generates 30% of our income. Our fund drive letter went out last week, the first week in December, and we hope that our attention to the coronavirus will help us increase our income. If listeners can afford to support us, I assure you that your money will be well spent. We do not charge people to take them to hospital, our service is free. There has been some good news recently about the vaccine for COVID, but this is not over. I would ask everyone listening, please wear a mask in public and maintain social distancing. And if there is anyone listening who thinks that this disease is a hoax, I encourage them to bring their opinion to the first aid squad and join me in the back of an ambulance for an evening. And if there are any questions, I'll take them now.
Thank you, Peter, any questions?
I got one there.
Todd?
I mean, Pete, I appreciate that, and all you guys are doing, see the kids in the background?
Yep.
Is there anything more that we can do as a borough, all right, you know, besides skirting, you know, state laws to make our town safer? I know we, you know, there's, we've stretched the mask wearing, you know, we've promoted outdoor dining, things of that nature, is there anything else you can think of besides just messaging and getting that message out there?
No, I think, I think as a borough, I think we've done incredibly well, and I think when you walk down Main Street, most people are wearing masks, and I think most people in Matutian are taking this seriously. I think, you know, when you walk down the Greenway, there are more people wearing masks now on the Greenway, and a lot of people that aren't wearing masks all the time are pulling them up as they walk past people, or, you know, across within six feet going in the direction. We've been very well supported by the borough and the OMS office within the borough. We had some issues getting PPE initially, but really, we have not had an issue since the end of March, and we're pretty well supplied right now.
Any other members of the council? You know, we've had 45 cases, including today, we had seven cases today positive. I want to say only one, although one is obviously too much, but we were thrilled to see only one yesterday, but six the day before that, five the day before that, two the day before that. It's really fluctuating at this point, but the seven-day number we have is 45 right now over the last seven days, including today. So it's, you know, as Peter said, it is tremendously serious. According to something I read, in New Jersey, there are some that believe literally today is the peak of the second wave, but that depends on so much, including how people handle the holidays. And as we saw right here in Matutian, we had that 15 positive day last week at one point, and that was really startling to me, because that was a clear post Thanksgiving, I mean, this has all been post Thanksgiving, you saw it happen, I mean, you just, it was just math. You saw the number of days after Thanksgiving, the number of tests, obviously, it lags a bit, and we saw it. You know, people will say, I just want to be with my mom, right? We planned it, it's fine, just remember that everywhere that person has been is an exposure now to you, and everywhere that you have been is an exposure to them. And so it's tremendously helpful for everyone to just figure out something different this year. I know people hate to hear it, I understand that, I know it's frustrating, I know it's upsetting, I understand people have family dynamic, I get that, I have my own family dynamic, we all do. I want to see my family on the holidays too, I love being with friends on the holidays, I'm sure everyone does, has their own traditions, but you've got to find new ones just for this year and resume them next year, you just have to think that way. It's the way that our community will get through this together, and as, and I appreciate what Peter said, our borough has been tremendous, we've had a very, very strong streak, at least with respect to the first wave, as compared to our county neighbors. We had the, up to the second wave, we had the best transmission rate, and that's not really the hottest, the lowest transmission rate in the county, but not anymore, right? And two people died just last week in Matutian. All right, or they were at least confirmed, one of them died, but one of them was, I think about another death that they attributed to COVID last week. We've had five people in our community die, and one out of every 500 people in New Jersey has died from COVID. One out of every 500 people has died from COVID. So this is no joke, and we're getting there, there will be a light for us to see, there will be a needle available for our arms at some point in, you know, in the spring for most of us, or the summer, but until that point, we just have to behave differently. It's just the reality. Okay, with that, we are on to public comment, and I know that there obviously is, you know, this is a difference, so we just explain to everybody how this happened. We ended up having a virtual meeting for the first time since, I don't know, June? I don't know when, Melissa, when our last public meeting, or say, virtual meeting was. But you know, the idea was that obviously, we wanted to do our best to act as our employees do, and when we asked our employees to come back to Borough Hall, we decided that we should come back to Borough Hall too. We asked them to come back for every day of the week, we can come back twice a month for them and lead by example. But with the recent spike, we've once again closed Borough Hall, obviously, that doesn't mean Borough operations are closed, I want to make that clear, but we closed Borough Hall with our employees' availability of working from home, which by, through Melissa's leadership, has been incredible and seamless, and no one would really even know the difference. But as it relates to us, when we called, we closed Borough Hall, that also means we close it for us. So this meeting is now virtual, and so if there are some hiccups along the way and here and there, you can blame me, I'm just, you know, I'm not as tech savvy as I wish for these times, but I'll do my best. But as a result of that, we have some people who are here tonight who may wish to speak in public, but we also have comments that we're going to be reading, that have been emailed to us. I know we've had quite a few of them on one particular issue. So what we're going to do first is I'm going to ask for people who wish to address the council and Mayor, if you can, please just raise your hand. And the way to raise your hand is, Councilman Pagel, on your participant screen, there's a place for you to to raise your hand. We already see, I see, okay, there you go, Todd is raising his hand. And then we've got Sharon Goldman raising her hand, just the hand that looks like that. So I will call on you, and when I do, I'll unmute you, and then you can join us for, obviously, for this discussion, all right? So I'll call on Sharon Goldman first. Hi, Sharon.
Hi, Jonathan, I emailed comment, but I'd like to, you know, share it by myself, if that's okay? Okay, and you can hear me okay?
And then I guess if it's okay with the members of the public, to the extent that your email has been, has been shared, but if you're going to be basically reiterating what's in your email, if it's better to hear it from you, obviously, so if you don't mind us putting that to the side, so-
Yes, absolutely. Okay, my name is Sharon Goldman, I live at 184 Highland Avenue. I'm here, you know, it's interesting that it's Todd's last day, I am here regarding pedestrian safety. Last week, I ran into a neighbor who lives on Highland, who was walking his dog, I hadn't seen him for a while, and he let me know that in the beginning of November, his wife had been walking in the crosswalk where Blockbuster used to be, the dialysis center is there now, by the Woodmont Development, and she was hit by the driver of an SUV, and she's a small person, probably weighs around 100 pounds, she was thrown by the vehicle and injured severely, she broke her pelvis, suffered internal bleeding, and I didn't hear anything about it, it wasn't on any of the Facebook groups, any official or unofficial sources. And I just want to, you know, find out why, you know, you know, I know there's certainly privacy issues, but, you know, just generally, why Matutian Police, you know, isn't informing the public about where these crashes happen and what can be done to stop SUVs from badly hurting people, you know, I feel pretty confident that this driver was probably not driving within the speed limit of 25 miles per hour, you know, people fly down that street on Lake Avenue and knew, it's very dangerous. You know, and I'm, of course, thrilled with the downtown development, it's been such a boon to our beautiful town, in my opinion, but, you know, I feel like there, you know, we're trying to make efforts to encourage residents and visitors to walk and bike more around town, and there just doesn't seem to be proper safety measures to make sure that, you know, these oversized SUVs are not mowing people down on our main streets. And that particular corner, I think, is something needs to be done there, it's very dangerous, whether you have the light or not. I feel like that, you know, there are things that could be done, like eliminating right on red, you know, there's like a beg button there, and there should be like a pedestrian walk interval, you know, Todd knows about that, and, you know, the corner could be narrowed, it could be repainted, and also just letting citizens know that there are serious accidents occurring at these locations in town, and my neighbor was left with severe injuries, and if Matutian walks, wants a walkable downtown, I think it should be a safe, walkable downtown that prioritizes pedestrians. So that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate your comment. I mean, I can only speak to the general degree of when matters are reported. I mean, Sharon, you raise a great point, it's important to understand when there's issues in the borough, where the hotspots, if you will, are, you know, there's this push and pull that I've, you know, and I've had this conversation, these conversations with Jason, you know, before, about how every time we take a more aggressive approach on pedestrian safety, there's like this, you know, this pushback, because this is, it's to some degree, it's like a war against cars. I mean, the further out we go, the more of a cultural shift there is with respect to what we're doing, and during that time, as people are learning the roads, if you will, there could be issues. There's no acceptable level of this, especially if cars are speeding, or if cars are, you know, are being reckless, and no matter when a pedestrian is hit, it is too often, but I will be the first to admit that pedestrians are hit quite often in Matutian, I mean, the numbers are startling. And, you know, obviously, we're doing our best to diminish those numbers with various fail safes, with the new Main Street, you know, Grant and Downtown Grant, or I should say, it's not all downtown, it's a pretty expansive area that we are covering, and we're working really hard to help out with little lit crosswalks, and finally, after however many years, five, six years, got put in this year, we're trying a lot of different things. But, you know, I can't say that there's always going to be an official communication of an incident, because there'd be, there'd be a whole lot of them, and I think it's better for statistics to be shared. to be shared probably on, on a statistical basis. It's maybe more helpful of where the problem spots are. But it's definitely something to discuss with the police chief um, to figure out how to move forward. So.
Hey Jonathan, can I say something there, please? Yeah, I had the uh, I unfortunately, I was uh, like third on scene on that. Uh, I was, that's my running route. I run that route every day. Um, and I came on it uh, as soon as the police were on scene. Uh, so the person was turning right on red. Uh, so when Sharon emailed us, all that, that kind of hit close to home because I did see it happen. Uh, and, and those um, those solutions that, that Sharon mentioned, I think they do a good job of toeing a line between that war on cars. Uh, most, most uh, planners and Mr. Cessenza could probably chime in here. Um, would suggest that, that banning right on red uh, almost everywhere in, in town would probably be beneficial for pedestrians. And it would only add minimal amount of time for people driving. And it would have avoided that, that accident there. Accents the bad word, that would have avoided that crash. Um, so um, thanks Sharon for bringing that up. And I think that's, I think that's something that the Traffic and Transportation Committee should, should look into. That intersection because it is highly transited uh, with the apartments and the, and the new apartments that are going to be going in will also be utilizing that crosswalk frequently uh, to get to Whole Foods. So right on red, paint it, square it off, leading, leading pedestrian intervals, which I know uh, Senator Dignan has been a, a big fan of in Matouchin. It might be a great uh, spot for that area as well.
And I know this issue and this incident in particular, which discussed at the Traffic and Transportation Committee meeting last week, as I understand it. Um, so uh, it's on the radar. I mean, when these things happen, they're quite serious and we take them seriously. But uh, you know, it, it just goes into a data mine where we try to figure out where we have the biggest issues. Are there other um, members of the public who would like to speak as opposed to having their comments read or would just like to speak? See if I have um, any raised hands. I do. I see Grace Schleck. Hi Grace, you're coming here in a different capacity. I know. Usually she was here when she was in high school to, to give the EMS report. It's nice to see you.
Hello everyone. It's nice to see you too. Can you hear me?
We can. Hi Grace.
Hey, awesome. Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
Good. Um, hi everyone. My name is Grace Schleck. I have been a lifelong resident of Matouchin. And I use she/her pronouns today. I'm just doing an introductory public comment um, on behalf of a group called Matouchin Youth for Equity and Racial Justice. And we're a non-hierarchical group, meaning we don't have any leaders. We lead by and for each other. And we're based in the area of Matouchin, composed of thirty young people at the moment. And we have advocacy points that we want to share with you all. So I'm just going to drop a link in the chat. And it has a lot of about info about our group. And I would love to invite dialogue around our advocacy points and hopefully that we can collaborate. And I want to also say that we are on Lenape land and as a predominantly non-indigenous group, we do not intend to speak for tribal nations and Lenape peoples. But we ask that you um, be as open-minded and receptive to our advocacy points as possible. Because we're fighting as young people for what we believe is a more inclusive and culturally sensitive place. So thank you for your time. And there were um, quite a few uh, public comments that um, people within the collective and accomplices sent. And I look forward to hearing what people emailed in.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much Grace. We appreciate it. Is there any other?
Jonathan, you're muted.
I told you I'd have trouble with this. Are there any other comments from the public? Um, to be read uh, by them or to be said by them or asked or mentioned by them as opposed to being read by our clerk? Okay. So I don't see any other public comments. So what we're going to ask, and I'm going to, I, I know that we received, how many, how many um, how many, how many public comments did we receive in general?
For this thirty-three comments.
Thirty-three comments on this particular issue, right? The, the, that, that Ms. Schleck just described. Okay.
Is, is hers is the one that I chose to read because hers contained most of what everybody was saying.
Well, that's okay. She, she, that's fine. I think that's a good one. So let's, there's thirty-three on the same subject. Are there any other uh, emailed comments that you have related to any other?
I had Shannon's. I was going to read it, but she did a great job herself.
Okay, great. Okay. So we have thirty-three comments. Now, I just want to be clear. Um, we obviously want to get as much original text from those comments at the risk of obviously being repetitive. So I want to ask council how to best handle this uh, from a public comment standpoint with these email comments. Again, this is the Wild West of the Open Public Meetings Act that we're in right now. And we want to do our best and uh, do our best to get as many comments in as possible. Well, at a minimum, I think, I would think, read everyone's names. But I also want to make sure that we're not just reading the same comment over and over again, because I know there was a template, it seems, that was used. So council, can you just explain, uh, make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing here?
You're talking to me, right? Me, this council?
This council, yes.
Uh, sure mayor. Uh, the, uh, as you know, because you're in, in the business. I mean, the local finance uh, board issued a, a notice. And there were regulations issued relating to uh, the conduct of the virtual and the remote meetings. And actually, that, that was what kind of opened up the whole uh, avenue for the public to submit written comments to be read at the uh, uh, public meetings. But those, those uh, notices and regulations also allowed uh, because a town could get, I mean, a hundred emails and spend hours upon, of, of, essentially of the same uh, 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 nature. And would have to spend hours and hours reading the emails. Uh, so the notice as well as the regulations do provide the towns with the ability. Uh, and, and I'll read it right, I mean, from uh, the reg. A local public body may pass over duplicate written comments. However, each duplicate written comment shall be noted for the record with the content summarized. If the local pop, public body elects to summarize the duplicative comments, the local public body must not summarize certain duplicative comments while reading others individually. So uh, as long as you utilize a uniform method uh, uh, and you're not going to uh, uh, just summarize uh, these comments while reading a hundred emails relating to another aspect. Uh, you, you're okay. What I would recommend uh, just based upon the regulations. If there is a form uh, uh, email or they generally uh, uh, all say the same or some say the same, that uh, there be a, uh, one be read and uh, uh, but also like the record should reflect uh, the recipients, uh, or I'm sorry, the senders uh, of, of the email. So even though you summarize uh, the email, say, if there are ten of the same email, I would recommend uh, you also not just reading the one email, but you indicate the ten folks or people uh, uh, who had sent uh, the email in. And if you have any, anyone has any questions, it'd be more than happy.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Jackson, if you could just read the email. And again, as much, if there's original text, we want to hear. Go ahead.
Okay. So original text, there was probably like twenty-four, I didn't get a chance to count it, that all had the same text. And it says, um, I support the following demands as more thoroughly described in the following link. Uh, they gave a link to change the indigenous figure on the Matouchin Police Department car badges and all other town-owned materials. To not increase the police budget, to change the imaginary, uh, the imagery on cars, badges and all other materials. To change the gun and indigenous figure on the Matouchin school seal. To restructure the Matouchin School District curriculum to be more inclusive of indigenous people, black people and people of color. And celebrate the excellence, intelligence and art of indigenous people, black people and people of color. The town no longer recognizes Columbus Day and instead recognizes Indigenous People Day. For the town to make their actions of undoing the harm of oppressive system completely transparent to the public on social media and in all public meetings. Um, this one does add a little bit more, but as I said, that was the basic um, email from about twenty-three, twenty-four of them. Um, and it goes on to say, if the only thing that honors indigenous history is the police badge, why does that say? What does that say about the town of Matouchin? Matouchin as a predominantly non-indigenous town, and she gave stats of point zero percent Native American, uh, Alaska native. According to statistics from the two thousand nineteen census population estimates, should not speak about how indigenous people should be honored. I do not want to live in a town that portrays this harmful imagery, uh, especially considering our town's education system and town. Do not properly acknowledge indigenous people, his, people's history and presence. The indigenous imagery on uh, the Matouchin Police Department badge and other town property have been changed several times throughout the history of the town, often becoming more cartoonish and losing the detail and significance of the original painting on which it was based. It has been shown that these types of characterized images mascots are psychologically damaging to indigenous people. I believe these images are harmful and should be changed. I believe these symbols, especially on police material, contribute to a broader oppressive system of policing and settler colonism that we must start talking about. I do not want to live in a town that portrays this harmful imagery, especially considering our town's education system and town. Do not properly acknowledge, it was kind of a repeat. Sorry about that. Um, and I do not want to leave this town behind without fixing it for the ones that stay and for future residents. Um, this one came from Angelina Gasaway, Gasaway. Um, Dennis, do I, should I read some of the other ones that were different, but still the same contents?
You should, if there's original texts, Susan, you should read them. Sorry, I don't want to step in on Dennis, but I, I presume council agrees.
But it, it, mayor, but if I may, if, if, if Susan could just outline, I think you said twenty people sent that one?
About twenty-four people who sent that form and this one had just a few other things. Everybody had that same context.
Okay. I, I, I would recommend just listing the twenty people who, I mean, the twenty people who sent it, just for the record that we've received twenty relating to that. And then as the mayor said to.
The other one. Okay. Um, so the one I just read was from Angelina Gasaway. Niana, and I, I'm sorry if I mispronounce their names because I will. Uh, Niana Prakash, Andrew Donnelly, Laura Jordan, Kira Malone, Sam Anton, Shaheed Covery, Sarah Wood, Amanda DeJesus, Catherine O'Brien, Victoria Jetzinski, sorry, Emma Yupursky, Michelle Quo, Sam Leahy, Anika Nelson, Dylan Jock, Maggie Kleiner, Maia Donald, Siri Keitha, Leah Sandler, Amy Kleiner, Gabriela Rivera. Uh, this one is Christina Apia, Jonathan Sweatman, Melina McNeil, and Dana Samco. They all had the same context. Um, the only difference was um, Angelina had a little bit more context. Um, and then the remainers. Um, Grace Schleck just sent me an updated one today. Um, it says, I hope this message finds you all healthy and well. I wish for this public comment to be read aloud tomorrow. Uh, please confirm that you received this if you have a chance. My name is Grace Schleck. I use she/her pronouns today and I am a Matouchin resident. I am contacting you as a member of Matouchin Youth for Equity and Racial Justice. I think this town news, use of Lenape Chief uh, Matouchin's various ways on its police department cars, badges and all of other town-owned materials is harmful and points to pervasive settler colonization, uh, colonism of this town. The settler colony history is visible in our point oh percent Native American population, according to the two thousand nineteen US census estimates. I believe it is harmful to have an image of the Lenape figure on the police badge, a police force that was meant and built to protect the settler state. To my knowledge, there is no reparations to the Lenape people. There is continual environmental degradation of indigenous land in the settler state of New Jersey. Um, she gave an example of man versus ford. If the fifth, in the fifth grade, my grade and I dressed up as colonizers and learned about Columbus. But there was no curriculum about the actual history of this area and how indigenous peoples are still here. If removing an offensive and cartoonish image of the Lenape chief is erasing indigenous history, I ask you to question why this is the only thing preserving history. Matouchin Borough calendars do not even recognize Indigenous People Day. One of the hopes of Matouchin's Youth for Equity and Racial Justice is that folks will recognize the history and presence of indigenous people. Uh, example, creating more humanizing and inclusive curriculum that includes Lenape history and presence. Looking into the land back movement, using dismantling settler privilege, celebrating Indigenous People Day, hiring and compensating indigenous creative and professionals. I do not think that Matouchin is a predominantly white town, um, as a predominantly white town should speak about how indigenous people should be honored. As a people who, as a person who is part of a Denny tribe, says in the More Than a Word documentary about indigenous mascots, specifically with the red R-word team, the outright disrespect and the outright racism, racism that was, you know, thrown at us, was socially acceptable. And then people continue to say that you should feel honored. This is an honor. We're honoring you. You can't force honor on people. The use of this Lenape chief on, on the police badge is clearly a mascot, a person or thing that is supposed to bring good luck and that is used to symbolize a particular event or organization. I will voice my opinions on the use of this badge, but as a white person, I will not speak for Lenape people. So I ask that you please listen to publicly made demands by indigenous people and activists to dismantle indigenous mascots across the settlers, United States. Matouchin Youth for Equity and Racial Justice has also tried to reach to indigenous communities and tribal nations in the settler state of New Jersey and indigenous organizations to amplify their voices. Please do not expect Lenape people to do um, uncompensated labor for this town, but please listen to them if they choose to take part in the conversation. Another quote I found really interesting from the documentary More Than a Word. So when we address native mascots as a large, on a larger scale, the controversy, the conversation is different than when we have that conversation within our own communities. Because for us as indigenous people confronting this, that issue is a psychological process because we are confronting colonism. We are bringing up our own history trauma and intergenerally, um, intergenerally racial, rational, sorry, trauma that we have to address and it's difficult. It can be very hard for people to go through that. As the Matouchin mayor said in his tweet on seven thirteen twenty, Justice Edison Township is named for the famous inventor, Thomas Alvin Edison, Matouchin is named for a person from our area's history. Sure, we can put Edison and Chief Matouchin into historical contents with each other, but please do not validate the use of a Lenape chief on a police badge with a white man who lived in the nineteenth and twentieth centuries. Thomas Edison was not forcibly displaced, displaced from this land. Many Lenape people were, plus Matouchin and its surrounding Edison, including Edison is Lenape land. Many Lenape people died because of displacement and murder. This was not Thomas Alvin Edison's narrative. Um, she goes on and says the same thing that I just read uh, with all the bullet points. And then she says, I suggest we look at this video in Indianola, Iowa. One of the members of Matouchin for Equity and Racial Justice is in contact with one of the organizations of this initiative. I also would love if our community supported more mutual aid initiatives and amplify indigenous organizing, organizing uh, efforts. I hope you respond thoughtfully to Matouchin Youth for Equity and Racial Justice advocacy points and listen to the indigenous people who take part in this dialogue and appreciate their work and time. I hope we can collectively have dialogue and I send this entire message with sincere, sincerest kindness and concerns. That was from Grace Schleck. That was from Gray Schleck. I have a few shorter ones, but still many. This one is from Olivia Matisse. And she says, I would like to thank the mayor for his thoughtful reply to my last email regarding this matter. I reached out a few weeks ago after the Metatchin UERJ movie screening of More Than a Word in support of the group's initiative to remove the indigenous chief from the Metatchin police badge and to other town property. Mr. Bush expressed his opinion that because of the figure of Chief Metatchin is not used as a mascot like the Washington Redskins was, the use of his image on the police badges is unoffensive. He also mentioned how there are other geographical locations barring indigenous Americans, American names, and that these names honor the people and tribes they were derived from. We are not arguing that places named after indigenous American people, words, or tribes isn't a way of honoring and remembering the rich history. And we are not trying to change the name of the town Metatchin. It is, however, important to recognize that this area has been thoroughly whitewashed since colonization, with the original inhabitants being forced off their land and subsequently oppressed and abused by colonial organizations for the past few hundred years. Simply using indigenous-derived names, especially with the spelling and pronunciation of lots of them have been anglicized, is not enough to honor these people who, while they have been alienated, ignored, and pushed to the fringes of society, are still very much present and alive today. While indigenous Americans are very diverse people and hold many varying opinions, it is widely their opinion that indigenous figures present on the property of non-indigenous communities are offensive and psychologically harmful and should be removed. The opinion that is not hard to come across when listening to indigenous voices. The mayor stated in his response at my last email, "We look forward to continuing to do everything we can to be responsibly research, explore, and honor the history of our first residents." If this is indeed the case, then why not listen to the voices that are telling you the image on the police badge and other town property is offensive and must be changed? We are presenting you with a perfect opportunity to turn your words into actions. Kate McGrath writes, "My name is Kate McGrath, and I am a resident of Metatchin. I am writing this as a public comment for the December 14 city council meeting and as reference for future discussions on the topic of updating the police badge and town emblem. By now, I'm sure you're well aware of everything that the Metatchin UERJ is advocating for a town specifically the removal of indigenous imagery from the police badge and town emblem. I want to state my support for their initiative as well as offer a parallel to the town of Indianola, Iowa, that was in similar positions earlier this year." Until July, Indianola uses indigenous imagery on their police badges, claiming it was a way of honoring indigenous people. Although there had been numerous failed attempts in the past to change the badge, she referenced Deb Sheil Larson spearheaded the successful movement this summer. She explained why she did so to the news, saying, "Our OGB friends said, I am not coming. I won't come. I am not going to visit you in Indianola anymore because of the offensive use of the imagery on the town badge." I reached out to Deb to ask her advice as UERJ was stating, "Because I knew it would be a difficult process to help all towns accept that their actions are harmful." She was extremely supportive and told me about how she first tried 20 years ago to get the town to change the badge. She wrote to the police chief, saying, "Police departments get a pass for this behavior." He showed her a collection of Indian head patches from other towns and insisted, "This is an honor to be clear, co-opting indigenous imagery, and minimizing a native chief to be a mascot of the police, an organization that disproportionately murders and harms indigenous people. It is not an honor in any sense of the word." Fortunately, thanks to Deb and another non-indigenous and indigenous supporter, the town of Indianola voted to remove all indigenous imagery from their police badges in July. I hope that hearing this story from a small town in Iowa will inspire you to take the same steps toward the more just future. And if not, know that we will continuously work until the change is made. I want to end with a quote from another Indianola resident, Dr. Steve Rose. "I think about my kids and my grandkids and what they want to associate with this town 20 years, 50 years from now. Is this the change of thing that you want representing us historically? I know that's a tradition, but traditions can change." And she says, "Thank you for your time, and I hope you take our concerns into serious consideration." Matt Meoni, he has, he said, "Hello, Mayor and Borough Council. My name is Matt Meoni, and I've spent the majority of the 26 years of my life living in Metatchin. I am making this public comment so to say I support Metatchin Youth for Equity and Racial Justice and their effort to have all racist and harmful imagery and depictions removed from being used in Metatchin, starting with the Metatchin Police Department badge. But before I truly get into the main points of this comment, I have to quickly mention for another Borough Council meeting that members of the public can only make a comment through email, and this is not satisfactory as an option. Other towns in Middlesex County have figured out other solutions." To also allow people to comment through Zoom and by calling in through phone calls. These options are vital during a pandemic. When making in-person comment is not possible. I understand Mayor Bush's position on the matter and that the council is following the Open Public Meetings Act, but as a member of the public, I am raising concerns over it. I am concerned because the public is not able to efficiently comment on anything that happens during the meeting and are not able to respond to questions and concerns answered by the council on any topic during the meeting. Last meeting, we were told that our comments sent in during the council meeting would be read, as well as several people's messages got bounced back and were not delivered. I understand for the council and mayor that this is the best way to conduct meetings, but as a member of the public, I can assure you it is not the best for us. The town of Metatchin is on stolen Lenape land. And as a community, how do we decide to honor the Lenape people? Chief Metatchin, their ancestors, their leading descendants who live today around North America and the world? By putting a racist cartoon depiction of Chief Metatchin on our police badge? But by putting a generic depiction of a Native American on the town seal and a high school seal? These are not honors. I am not an indigenous person, but I can clearly see that these images are harmful, and Chief Metatchin's likeness is being used as a quasi-mascot for our town. This is not how we should honor the Lenape people. And as a town, we should address this imagery and examine what is wrong, why it is wrong, and not only learn from it, but also prominently remove this kind of thinking and perspective. I am not pointing fingers at individuals, but rather our community. What side of history do we want to be on? The side that upholds, emboldens, and further embeds settler colonism? Or do we want to be on the side that is seeking to end settler colonism? We should be on the side that recognizes all indigenous people, past and present struggles, and choose to support and fight with them. The history we should be teaching and portraying of the Lenape people should not be viewed through a whitewashed Eurocentric lens, but rather one that centers on the Lenape. The history does not gloss over and downplay settler colonization and white supremacy. The council is set to talk about officially recognizing Indigenous People Day in town during the meeting on January 1, 2021. But is the council also going to talk about unrecognizing Columbus Day? If we recognize Indigenous People Day, but do not examine why we celebrate, honor, and remember in a positive way the legacy of the colonizer known as Christopher Columbus, then our actions would be hypocritical. Our actions as a town would be performed because it is not about officially recognizing Indigenous People Day as a town, something the state of New Jersey already does, but it is also about learning about the lasting impacts of settler colonism and white supremacy. It is not only about celebrating indigenous culture, but also about helping indigenous communities today and helping them with their sovereignty and human rights, which is continuously ignored by not condemning what the colonizer, murderer, and slaver Christopher Columbus stood for and by, in fact, honoring him with a holiday. Then, as a town, we are missing the point we intended to learn, understand, and make with recognizing Indigenous People Day. Because if we truly think about it by accepting one, aren't we rejecting the other? In conclusion, I am writing in support of Metatchin Youth for Equity and Racial Justice advocacy points to change the indigenous figure on the Metatchin Police Department cars, badges, and all town-owned materials, to not increase the police budget, to change the imagery of cars, badges, and other material, to change the gun and indigenous figure on the Metatchin school seal. The town no longer recognizes Columbus Day and recognizes Indigenous People Day. And that is from Matt Meoni. I have a few shorter ones.
Susan, if I may. I mean, you're permitted, and Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I mean, if the governing body is permitted to summarize duplicative public comments. And there's also a limitation on the timeframe. One thing I just want to point out, just based upon what I heard from the last meeting, there's nothing that the Borough has done to prevent anyone from making a public comment. I mean, as you know, earlier tonight, you opened the meeting up for public comment, and people were permitted to make public comment at that time. So I just want the record to be clear that the Borough has not indicated that the only way people are permitted to publicly comment at the meeting is via an email through Susan. But, and just going back to my last comment, I mean, Susan, I think you can, I mean, go through and summarize the other duplicative emails and just let the record reflect on who had sent them.
Okay. Well, there's three more that are left. They are, one is from Luke Spaltrow and Stephen Kenny, and they both said the same thing, pretty much, but they provided pictures of Chief Metatchin and the police badges. So those two are the same ones. They didn't go into the same depth as the other ones. And this last one is from Alana Redwood, and she said the same thing as the last few that I read about indigenous people and Chief Metatchin. And, but she doesn't state any of the bullet points that everybody else stated. But she went on to say pretty much the same thing. That was it.
Okay. Are the emails different? Those last two emails, are they different?
They're not different.
Are they quick?
Two were worded, I mean, they're all worded a little different, but they all have the same context. So as I said, these two from Luke and Stephen were just basically showing us pictures of Chief Metatchin and the police badges, and that they support the organization. And Alana goes on to talk about the same thing of the history of the Lenape people and Chief Metatchin and recognizing the indigenous people.
Dennis, are you satisfied?
Yes. I mean, without actually seeing them, yes, I'm satisfied, and I trust Susan that they're, I mean, and that she summarized.
Okay. All right. So are there any other comments, Susan?
No, I'm looking, nothing right now.
Okay. And, you know, obviously, when public comment's over, we've got to move on to the ordinances. We have a lot to deal with tonight. I just, I want to start by saying that, you know, months ago, I directed the Borough to begin including Indigenous Peoples' Day on the calendar for 2021. So it's well past time for that. I think everybody knows that. And that will be included in the upcoming calendar for the first time. There's obviously a lot to unpack in the dialogue here that's been presented in public comment. Many, including I, during my time as mayor, have worked hard on the topic of honoring our first residents. I mean, this was and is their land. But this is also a time to be reflective and not reflexive. And we have to be particularly careful about the looseness of words, terms, and constructs that are just being thrown around right now. There are a lot more facts to be understood. Like many of us, I applaud the, you know, Washington football teams and the Cleveland baseball teams, which we just heard about, obviously, last night and today, their efforts to develop a national dialogue on this topic. And my immediate reaction to those decisions and biggest concern is the issue of whether our police badge here in Metatchin depicts a mascot. It does not. Over the summer, I spoke with former Chief Joseph Perino, who is now 101 years old, God bless him. Former Chief Perino was lent, what some historians believe, is an original sketch from life from 1693 of Chief Metatchin. Chief Perino took a picture of the sketch with a department camera and created the painting that we all have seen, at least the one. There's, the original one hangs in the office of the police chief, and then there's a copy that many of us have seen in the library, if you haven't seen it, in the police chief's office. As some of you know, the painting became the impetus for the police badge we have today. And let's be clear, Chief Perino was not painting his idea of a chief. He wasn't trying to create a caricature of the chief. Rather, he was creating a painting of a sketch, a sketch from life. To our current police chief, David Rosari's credit and sensitivity, he contacted multiple Lenape tribal representatives to discuss the department's badge. He is now in touch with a renowned tribal activist, an elected tribal councilman. He's the first principal justice of the tribal Supreme Court for the state-recognized Nanticoke Lene Lenape Tribe. His name is Reverend Dr. JR Norwood. And the chief also spoke with Nanticoke Lene Lenape Chief Mark Gould, the chief of the whole Nanticoke Lene Lenape Tribe. On both of their behabings, Dr. Norwood explained that the following questions can be applied in evaluating whether an image or a logo is truly honoring or disrespecting their culture. One, is the image or reference generally historically accurate and sensitive to historical concerns? Two, is the image or reference a caricature? Right? That's been referenced before. Is the image or reference a caricature that can promote stereotypes? And three, is official and ongoing permission to use the image or reference granted by a continuing historic tribal community of the area with connections to the depiction? And is the image or reference used to educate about the ongoing history of that community? After reviewing the police patch themselves, Dr. Norwood concluded that they do not view our badge as representing a mascot because they don't believe that any cultural misappropriation is being committed. Specifically, Dr. Norwood explained that the image of the police patch is based upon an artist's impression of a historically documented Lenape chief, after whom Metatchin is named. The rendering is aimed at acknowledging and honoring the importance of Chief Metatchin to the history of Metatchin. It is dignified and does not lend itself to negative stereotypes. Dr. Norwood further explained that the potential collateral damage of what he described as an unwise or overzealous campaign could result in the erasure of any appreciation for the tribal history of an area. And in this context, eliminating the chief from all depiction of the very town that bears his name could have the unintended result of dishonoring him. At that point, his story would be lost from ours. And let's be fair. And, and let's be fair, none of us have done enough to tell the stories of our most famous, yet underrepresented residents. For example, how many of you, how many of any of us have studied Thomas Mondy Peterson, the first African-American to vote in the United States, from Matuchin? Or Mary Wilkins Freeman, one of the most highly respected feminist authors of the late 1800s, from Matuchin? These are Matuchin stories, and we need to recognize the stories and the struggles of these individuals who are all from historically marginalized groups. Social justice is about so much more than one logo. It's about what we teach our kids. It's about representation, access, and, most importantly, inclusion. And if we're really being honest, we can all do so much more. We could, at some point, all come to the conclusion that there are more meaningful ways to honor Chief Matuchin and other figures who are underrepresented to the average resident. I know that the Human Relations Commission, for example, discussed this matter with some members of the group at its last meeting, and the HRC members explained that it would continue to look at ways to address a variety of these related issues. Do we commission a statue, a bust, or maybe we have a mural painted? Perhaps we can find some other creative, yet appropriate, ways to do so. But until then, we need not act in haste, which may have the unintended consequence of eliminating one of our only existing connections to the very people whose land we now call home. Council President?
Okay, so Ordinance 2020-20. Ms. Jackson, will you please present the affidavit of publication?
The affidavit of publication stating that said ordinance 2020-20 has been published one time in the Home News Tribune according to law on December 3, 2020.
I move that the affidavit of publication be received and filed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ms. Jackson, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
An ordinance adopting an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the entirety of the Borough of Matuchin, a designated rehabilitation area for Block 121, Lot 9, Block 114, Lots 24 through 26, and 66, Block 113, Lots 4 and 6, and Block 113, Lots 39, 41, and 43.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing on Ordinance 2020-20. So if you would like to participate in this, I'd like to see your hand raised, if you can use that in the participant function. Is there any hand raised on that? Susan, any emails on this subject through the public?
No.
Okay. We're going to close the public hearing. Council President?
I move to pass ordinance 2020-20 on second reading and publish according to law.
Do I have a second? Todd?
Does that count? Second.
If you're on mute and you can't hear it, it depends. I mean, you got to look at the, got to have some.
The thumbs up doesn't count either.
The mute, the mute button's got me twice already. So I'm leading the league. Don't worry, Todd. All right. Roll call, please. Ms. Jackson?
Councilman Delia?
If I may, just say a few things before I vote. That's okay, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I just wanted to, so this is, I'm really excited about this ordinance and this redevelopment plan. Really, I want to thank Mr. Muldoon, Mr. Cosenza, Mr. Constantine, the mayor, council president, everyone that worked on this. You know, this is, we're following our master plan here. Like, our plan is to increase density downtown. We are, we're listening to our experts, we're listening to LRK, we're listening to our volunteers on the planning board, who are telling us that these are the right things to do. So more residential density downtown, that's the goal. You know, there's plenty of studies that, that point to that as a way to move forward as a town and to continue to grow. It's, it's desirable for all different types of folks, you know, empty nesters, people just starting out. We can look at all of our new neighbors at Woodmont Metro and see that, see the incredible mix of people that projects like this bring downtown. And to be quite frank, a project like Woodmont Metro might be saving us right now. Our public, our, our surface parking lot revenue is dried up, and if that was still just a parking lot, being empty all day, you know, seven days a week, we'd be missing out, not only on those parking revenues, which we are, but we've been missing out on those additional revenues. And not, and having those folks downtown shopping and living and now working downtown in, in their, in their apartment. So these are great projects. This is what we should be doing, and I'm enthusiastically vote yes on this one.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pagel?
I'd like to say a couple of things too, Mayor. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can't echo Councilman Delia's comments enough. He said it very eloquently, so I'm going to, I'm going to skip to some other things. I wasn't able to attend the first meeting where we voted on this, but I did bring it up at the planning board meeting. And I, and I can't let this go without being said a couple of things, especially after those such nice things that everyone said about me. And I know I have, we have Mr. Muldoon on the line and Mr. Cosenza, and I emailed this to a couple of folks as well prior to the meeting, so this isn't completely coming out of left field there. Again, adamantly, you know, in, in favor of this, this is an amazing, amazing project that we need to continue to do for the next, you know, decade, 20, 30 years. A town that's not growing is dying, in my opinion. And, and again, you know, this is following, as, as Councilman Delia said, the experts. So I really think this is great. And I don't want, you know, perfection to be the, you know, the, you know, the goal here. But I do think there's some things that we really, really need to consider with these large projects because they are going to be around for, hopefully, 30, 40, 50 years when we're all gone, right? And I think it'd be short-sighted if we didn't, you know, really, really push for some environmental improvements on these buildings, particularly solar panels. I think it's a wasted opportunity if we don't try to convince the builders to put solar panels on these buildings. I think Woodmont and the other apartments in town, the hub, I think the fact that those don't have solar panels and are generating, aren't generating, you know, income and electricity for those buildings and those residents is a crime. So I really, really like to work with Mr. Cosenza and Mr. Muldoon to reach out to the builders. There's just so many benefits to putting solar on, on buildings, not only for the residents, for the environment, but also cost-wise. There's tax breaks, there's tax incentives. I really, really think that's something we should look into, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. New Jersey wants to be carbon neutral by 2050, right? Are these buildings going to be around after 2050? Absolutely, right? So let's start planning for that 2050 carbon neutral now, and, and putting solar panels and having other green infrastructure on these buildings would be a huge benefit. Which brings me to my next point, which would be solar charging stations for vehicles. They are not mandated in any of these building plans. I think that the council should have, should be able to mandate those. And if we can't mandate them, we need to reach out to the builders and express that we want solar charging stations. It costs a fraction of the price to install them during installation and during buildings than it does to, to put them in afterwards. So I think, again, you know, kind of, it would be a little bit of a, it would be a crime if we didn't put more than just one. I know Mr. Cosenza has a couple and a couple of the projects, but every parking spot that we're building, which I think it's, you know, 15 or 20 at this point, needs, should have solar, should have charging stations for electric vehicles. So that's something that, again, the next two weeks, I'd like to work with Mr. Cosenza on, and I'll continue to advocate for it as these plans come up. Kind of another one on a bigger stretch here, but again, you know, these buildings are going to be around for the next 50 years, is, is not having them built with natural gas. Many coun, many states and cities are doing that in new construction homes. I don't like dictating what people can and can't do in their homes, but this is a huge, huge health benefit and a health risk for, for kids. Most indoor pollution comes from your gas stove. So if we're going to be building these 49 apartments, you know, it makes sense to have these built with induction. It's cheaper, it's safer, and it's much better for, for the residents. Off the, off the environmental kick for a little bit, height requirements. I understand that these buildings, you know, we want to maintain a certain height in, in the downtown area, but I, I think as a council, as a planning board, moving forward, you should, we should definitely be having the discussion about making these buildings a little bit higher because it just makes more sense, you know, especially for the Sherman Williams lot. To, to add one or two more stories on that, I think would be very, very beneficial. There's already plenty of parking, so that's not a worry. Why not, you know, increase that height a little bit as well? The bank project, is this the bank project one? Still, that bank project? Bank project, same idea. I, I know that there's no, there's no apartments in it, and I think, and I, you know, we're not the builders here, and I'm not made of money, obviously, but, you know, I would highly suggest that, you know, that is in the downtown center of our town, smack dab in the center. It's going to be a beautiful building. Mr. Cosenza, you know, explained it very eloquently at the planning board meeting, you know, about how the corner's going to be. Put some apartments above that, and it would be golden. In addition to that, I know Councilman Delia brought it up, the idea of having a drive-through bank, I know that's part of their business plan, but it's just, you know, it's 2020, almost 2021. I haven't used a drive-up bank, and I know I'm not the only person who lives in Matuchin, but, you know, we know that, that, you know, having a drive-through promotes driving downtown, and we don't need that. So I'd be against that as well. I know I'm just, this is just stuff going, you know, on the record there. That's all I got. I, I hope, you know, I know I wasn't there at the last meeting to bring this up, and I hope I didn't saturate everyone with this. I promise, Susan, I'll keep my other remarks shorter later, but I really, really think that these environmental initiatives should be something, and I'd be happy to reach out. I know some of the builders in town who are doing these projects, you know, to discuss that with them, and we, you know, to work with them, to get as many tax credits as possible. You know, maybe the town could waive some, waive some planning fees. I don't know, but these builders are going to be around for a long, long time, and, you know, I would love to see those, those infrastructure improvements put on them. Thanks for listening.
How are you voting?
I got to vote after all that spiel? Yeah, I vote yes. Great job, Jay Muldoon. Great job, Chris. Great job, LRK. Everyone involved, these, these are awesome. But, you know, please, I'm going to bring this up at every turn, and I'm going to be in front of those buildings with a sign, probably, you know, protesting.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
I think I'm just going to say yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
I'm going to vote yes as well, but I want to add in one piece that hasn't been brought up about the developments in all of the conversations that we've had. I, I think it's important for, for people to think about development as not just buildings and apartments and structures. These developments bring people into our town, and we don't often talk about that. And these people that we bring into our town are, are the heart of Matuchin. They become members of our various commissions. They become families who have, generations grow up in Matuchin. They, they provide customers and shoppers for our restaurants and our stores. And we should be looking at these developments as a, always as a positive investment in the human department. And we often lose sight of that when we talk about them as just buildings. And I, for one, I'm, I'm excited to meet new people who bring all types of diversity and history into town, people who live here. And that's what we care about the most. So yes, my vote is yes.
And Council President Kozkowski?
I would also just like to add that I am very much in favor of this development. As a former business owner, I think about how different and how much more successful my business would have been, although it was a successful business, but if I had all of those people within walking distance from their home to my shop, what my shop would have been like. So when we vote for this kind of development, we're voting for a strong and economically vibrant downtown. So I emphatically vote yes.
We got everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to Ordinance 2020-21. Ms. Jackson, will you please present the affidavit of publication?
An affidavit of publication stating that said ordinance 2020-21 has been published one time in the Home News Tribune according to law on December 3, 2020.
I move that the affidavit of publication be received and filed.
Do I have a second? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council President?
Okay. I think at this time, I want to move to amend. Is that what I do now?
Yeah. Actually, i- if you'd like, you could have Susan read the title of the ordinance, and then you can move to amend, or you, you could have her read the title, and then if you want to hear from Ms. Givens, Ms., Mr. Muldoon, or Ms. Cosenza relating to the amendment, and then you could move to amend.
Okay. Then I will ask you, Susan, to please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance adopting an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the entirety of the Borough of Matuchin, a designated rehabilitation area for Block 117, Lot 93.
Okay. And since we do know that there is an amendment to be adopted for this, I'm going to ask that the amendment be explained to us. So I guess Ms. Givens?
Sure. We noticed when going through the redevelopment plan that there were two sections, a question came up when someone was reading through it. On page 14 of this redevelopment plan, we, we state that the concept plan that's attached is illustrative. It represents a one possible layout, but it's not required to be developed in that fashion. And then later on in the document, on page 23, at section 5.3.2, point F, point 1, it stated that development, development within subarea B will be the driveway and garage shall be located as shown on Exhibit C, Subarea B Concept Plan. And the intent there was that the garage is going to be located at the end of the driveway behind the home, not that the driveway must be in that particular location. So we just wanted to clarify that statement so that the document was consistent throughout. So the new language is going to read in that section, the 5.32F1, it will now read, "The driveway and garage shall be generally designed as illustrated on Exhibit C, Subarea B Concept Plan." And, and again, it's really just for clarification that the garage needs to be at the end of the driveway behind the house, not whether it needs to be on the right or left of the house, just that it needs to be at the end of the driveway behind.
Okay. Thank you. Does, did everybody understand that? Does anyone have any questions regarding that? Okay, then, Mayor, I think we can open it up for.
Actually, I would recommend at this point now moving to amend.
Okay. So then I move to amend, as explained to us, the ordinance 2020-21.
All right. So once she's made the motion, then there would be a second, and then we'll open up for public hearing?
She's only seeking to amend it.
All right. But we're not going to have a vote on the amendment, are we?
After the public, after the public, you're then going to move to adopt as amended.
Got it. Okay. So now we're opening up to the public hearing.
Now, you, you need a second for a motion to amend, and then a vote on whether we're going to amend it or not.
Oh, that's what you asked.
We're going to have the war of, of Robert's Rules of Order here?
Yes.
Are we going to vote on this? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we got a second.
Now, the vote is only just to amend the ordinance. That's it.
Want to vote on the amendment? Got it. Okay. And that's not a roll call vote necessarily, is it?
No, it doesn't have to be.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? All right. Now that we've done that, it's now as amended, right? And we're going to open the public hearing. Thank you.
Yes.
Particularly valuable tonight here, Dennis. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're going to open the public hearing. Have there been any comments that have been emailed to you?
No. No.
Okay. And I'm looking here just to see if there are any hands raised, just again, to the members of the public, if you can raise your hand using the function on Zoom. That'd be great. I don't see any. I don't see any. And with no emailed comments to the public meeting page or email address, I should say. Council President?
Okay, so then I move to pass ordinance 2020-21 as amended on second reading and published according to law.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Jackson.
Sorry. Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pagel?
Sorry, everybody. Can I say something quickly?
Don't have to apologize, man. This is your.
I'm taking it all I can in my last meeting, right? I wasn't here for the, for the first meeting either. And, and you know, I, I heard, you know, I'm very good friends with Nancy, who's going to be hopefully taking, taking control of that house and building apartments, you know, or refurbishing those apartments there, which is a great project. Very, very excited for that, you know, on the historical preservation side, but also on the, on the density side. But again, one of my concerns is the two single-family homes on Highland. Highland, right? Highland, yep. Yeah, I just think, you know, again, I'm not a builder and I know I'm not finding the money for these projects. But when it comes to, you know, stimulating our downtown, there's already townhouses in that area. It's walking distance from our town. That would be a great area for some, you know, townhouses or duplexes or quadplexes. And I, and I think it comes down to this, and I, and I haven't really brought this up much when we talk about, you know, density in these buildings, but it's an equity issue. These two single-family homes are going to go for $800,000. And we are really, really missing out on that middle income housing in Matutian. You know, there's, there's some houses that are, you know, almost on the teardown, you know, renovate type, type list. We don't really have much in that 200, $300,000 range so that we could get other people to come to Matutian who may not be able to afford an $800,000 home. So I think that area, those two lots would be phenomenal for a quadplex or something of that nature. Again, I know I'm not the builder, but I just wanted to go on record saying that. Or even a senior living, something I didn't bring up in the, in the first, in the first ordinance, in the first redevelopment ordinance, is handicapped housing for elderly. As many of you know, my parents moved to Matutian in the hub, you know, for that reason. And it's not a completely handicapped, you know, accessible apartment. And that would be a great area for that senior living, something of that nature. So again, I know I'm not the builder. And I know Jay and Chris put a lot of work into these plans and I know the builders as well. But you know, just going on the record is saying that would be a, I think, I think having two $2,000,000 homes there is, is the wrong choice. And I would love to see, you know, apartments or townhouses built there as well. So I'm going to be a no on this one.
Okay.
Got it. Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes.
Council President Kaskowski?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance 2020-17. Ms. Jackson, would you please present the affidavit of publication?
An affidavit of publication stating that said, or said ordinance 2020-17 has been published one time in the Home News Tribune, according to law, on December 3rd, 2020.
I move that the affidavit of publication be received and filed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, Council President?
Ms. Jackson, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
An ordinance to establish salary ranges for certain officers and employees of the borough of Matutian.
Okay, at this point, we're going to open the public hearing on 2020-17. And I'm first going to turn before I, once again, I'm going to ask the public if they want to speak and raise their hands using the, the Zoom hand raise function. And Ms. Jackson, have we received any emails on 2020-17?
No.
All right, seeing none. Council President?
I move to pass ordinance 2020-17 on second reading and publish according to law.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pagel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes.
Council President Kaskowski?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance 2020-18. Ms. Jackson, would you please present the affidavit of publication?
The affidavit of publication stating that said ordinance 2020-18 has been published one time in the Home News Tribune, according to law, on December 3rd, 2020.
I move that the affidavit of publication be received and filed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Ms. Jackson, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
An ordinance amending section 166-35 in Article 4, Construction and Maintenance of Sidewalks in Chapter 166, Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of the Borough of Matutian, to delete the security deposit requirement.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing on 2020-18. And I'm looking to see if anybody from the public, again, just because we're in a separate hearing, I'd like to know if you'd like to say anything during the hearing, if you could just put your hand raised using the Zoom function. And if I don't see anything there while we're looking, Ms. Jackson, anything on 2020-18?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Seeing none. Council President?
I move to pass ordinance 2020-18 on second reading and publish according to law.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pagel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes.
Council President Kaskowski?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance 2020-19. Ms. Jackson, will you please present the affidavit of publication?
The affidavit of publication stating that said ordinance 2020-19 has been published one time in the Home News Tribune, according to law, on December 3rd, 2020.
I move that the affidavit of publication be received and filed.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is this being amended, this one?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll get to that next.
All right, so.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Hold on. So I said a second, so now we do roll call?
No, no, just voice.
Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, Council President?
Ms. Jackson, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
Okay, get ready. It's long. An ordinance amending section 110-113 contents in Article 4, Application Forms in Part 2, Applications for Development in Chapter 110, Land Development. Amending section 110-112.7, Design and Landscape Provisions in Article 23, Supplementary Regulation in Part 3, Zoning in Chapter 110, Land Development, and amending Article 46, Shade Tree Standards, now to be titled Tree Standards, in Part 4, Development and Design Standards in Chapter 110, Land Development of the Code of the Borough of Matutian, to revise requirements relating to trees in connection with applications for construction and development.
Thank you. Quite a feat. Okay, at this time, I, I would ask, I'm not sure who to ask, Melissa or maybe Jay, if we could have the amendment to this?
Yeah, I, I could help. I mean, I don't want to, it's up to Melissa, I mean.
Go for it. Go for it.
The, the ordinance was sent to the planning board and they've reported back on the proposed ordinance. And one of their recommendations, or their recommendation was that the mayor and council adopt the proposed ordinance with the deletion of the word council, C O U N C I L, in sections 110-181.C9 and section 181.2A. So, and that was reflected in their resolution relating to the ordinance. That's one of the changes. And the other change just reflects to, reflects a change in a typographical error of the word, of the words from. Just give me one second. I'll tell you exactly what. Changing, changing, it were the, the initial ordinance referred to the the planning board of zoning board of adjustment. In, in the second change is that it just say as part of application to the planning board or zoning board of adjustment. That's just a typographical error. But the other relates to removing the word council. It still requires borough approval, just not borough council approval. And I'll defer to to Melissa if she has anything further she'd like to add.
No, you summarized it. It was just an error when they were writing, they should have put borough and they put borough council. So we just wanted to make sure that was clean. We're trying to get away from it being overly bureaucratic and burdensome with these one-off escrow accounts. And we're moving it to be more towards enforcement so we can get more financially feasible things when people do things wrong to correct them instead of just holding this escrow for a small amount of money and it becomes very burdensome for council, for our finance office. This is, I think, at least we'll try it. This is a better way to address issues when they come up with sidewalk replacements. Thanks.
Okay, then, does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, then I move to adopt the.
Now, you're going to move to amend.
Oh, that's what I mean. I move to amend the ordinance, ordinance 2020-19 as explained to us.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion to amend, it's all those in favor, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Someone has to vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay. Do we have a second, Dennis?
Yes, we have a second.
We're all good, right?
I did it.
All right, now what?
Now you have the public hearing on it.
Yep.
As amended.
All right, we're going to have a public hearing now? And then we're looking at the list of participants and I don't see anybody having raised their hand. If you want to participate, please raise your hand. And if you don't participate there, Ms. Jackson, do we have anybody willing to speak up on 2020-19?
I have nothing.
You have nothing. Thank you. All right, I'll close that now. Council President?
Then I move to pass ordinance 2020-19 as amended on second reading and publish according to law.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Jackson?
Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pagel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes.
Council President Kaskowski?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I move to approve Borough Council Meeting Minutes of November 9th, 2020.
Is there a second? He wasn't there. He wasn't there. We need another second. Who's seconding it? Jason. Councilman Delia's second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Councilman Hirsch, were you there?
I abstain, yeah.
Yeah.
God, you were there, you were there on the 9th.
Right, you were there on the 9th. Correct.
I was not there on the 9th. I abstain. Todd does not abstain. Todd, you want to change your vote?
It's all right. We, we only heard one abstention since it wasn't a roll call vote anyway. All right, let the record reflect. All right, on to the next council, council meeting minutes.
Okay, I move to approve Borough Council Meeting Minutes of November 23rd, 2020.
Now you can't respond.
Second.
So who's second? Is it, is Councilman Hirsch gave a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for any abstentions?
I abstain.
For the record, it's Pagel's abstention. Okay. On to communications consent agenda.
Okay, at this time, I move to approve communications consent agenda, items A through D.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, reports of council members. Council President Kaskowski?
I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rubin?
No report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Okay, I have a brief report, but before I give my brief report, when we were talking about the situation with the indigenous people earlier, I wanted to say something, but I think I was muted and, and you didn't hear me, so I'm going to say it now. Maybe like in the future, in the near future, hopefully when things get better with COVID, I remember that the Human Relations Commission had done some like international, I guess like an International Traditions Day where they had people come from different ethnic groups, showing off some of their traditions and culture. And I would like to see if something like that could be included with the Lenape Indians, working with the tribal leaders to bring some of that culture to Matutian. I think that would be wonderful. And also if it would be possible, maybe we could do it maybe during the month of the chief's birthday. Like, I don't know if, I really don't know myself when he was born or what month, but if we could find all of that out, maybe we could have, you know, like, like an Indigenous People Day celebrating the culture of the chief that our town is named after. And that's kind of what I wanted to say.
Before, just before you move on that, there are some great points that you made. First of all, I know that Dr. Norwood, who's the man I referenced in my talk after the public comments, is going, coming for a training with our police department, which I, which I was really thrilled to hear. Irisari and Norwood spoke a couple of weeks ago about that. And he's a pretty prominent guy, you know, he's a tribal activist. And so we've been talking about the concept of various trainings with our police department for sensitivity and other issues. I know the, the Police Commission has been working on, on, on some recommendations. I presume there'll be some training recommendations in there, although I don't know that for sure. But without any recommendations, still having that will be great, number one. Number two, that we've been in talks with the historical, you know, the Edison, Matutian Edison Historical Society. And there are some really great programs that are offered by the County of Middlesex and others, where there's some people who are real experts in this area. And I think it would be fabulous to have a, a conversation in, in Matutian with people who are very knowledgeable about the Lenape, the Lenape in this region. And, and you know, part of the issue here is there is so little known about these people. You know, it, it is such a tragic story. They, they spent so many years here, yet have so little, you know, to show for it at this point. I mean, for example, you, you were talking about the concept of honoring Chief Matutian on his birthday. To my knowledge, we don't know when his birthday was. You know, we know very little about Chief Matutian, other than the fact that he was a prominent fellow from this area who was referenced, I believe, and please, there's many more authorities on this than, than, than I am. But I believe he was referenced in a letter sent home to Europe about a chief in this area who ruled over people that lived here and it was, it was respected. And that was where the reference was, the Chief Matutian. I mean, he's believed to have lived from the, I think, I don't know the exact year, but apparently he died in 1700. They know that. He died in 1700. But I don't know that we know when his birthday was. And so one thing I can tell you is that the Human Relations Commission met with this group of, of mostly students who, who spoke to us earlier today, either last week or the week before. And I don't know if Sherri Rose wants to add anything to that, but you know, there, there are all kinds of things we can do. And, and frankly, it's incumbent on us to. Right? We need to do more. I think everybody here agrees. I'm seeing some nodding heads. We need to do more to acknowledge the first people who lived here. And, you know, we're on their land, right? And we should do what we can to bring back whatever we can to acknowledge them and to have conversations, to spark conversations. You know, there, there are many towns and lakes and mountain ranges and regions of New Jersey that are named after Native Americans. But how many of them are doing what they should do ethically, if you will, to, to, to bring back as much of that culture as possible? So I think the HRC is a great outlet for that. They've done some really good work already. And so between the, you know, the Edison, Matutian Edison Historical Society and the HRC, let's, let's, I mean, we've, we've got a little way to go here, but let's, when we get out of this tunnel. let's, let's think about doing that soon thereafter. And maybe, maybe, you know, doing it during October is a good month, just because obviously to honor Indigenous Peoples' Day. You know, there's a lot of options, but I'd leave that to the historical, excuse me, the, the Touching Historical Society and the HRC. And I, and I, and Dorothy, only because you brought this up, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Rubin if she wants to say anything about the HRC meeting.
Mayor, before Sherri speaks, I do have a comment from Hazel Ann Johnson Marcus, responding to Councilwoman Rasmussen, that at their December meeting, the Human Relations Commission did discuss incorporating Indigenous people into their programming for next year.
Okay, great, I think it's essential. Go ahead, Sherri Rose.
Um, yes, um, I mean Hazel Ann is on this call as well, but when we had our last HRC meeting a few weeks ago, all of the members of the youth group came to our meeting and we gave them, you know, a significant amount of time during public comment to present the same material that they've presented tonight and in their letters that they sent in to be read for public comment. And so I, I felt at that time that the Human Relations Commission committed itself to learning more, inviting Indigenous people to come and, and teach us so that we can make informed decisions and, and make choices as we move forward as a borough. I felt that we, we gave a, a significant commitment to this issue and that we acknowledge we have work to do and that we need to learn how to do that work and that responding, you know, to something such as a demand or, you know, in a, in a thoughtless way wouldn't serve anyone's interests. So, you know, I don't know if Hazel Ann wants to add anything, but we, we have committed a significant amount of desire to move this issue forward and make progress.
And important, and, and I want, and, and since Hazel Ann, Dr. Hazel Ann Johnson Marcus is here, I would, I know, Councilwoman Rasmussen, we're in the middle of your comment, but it is relevant to what you raised. If you're okay, can we just deviate and, and ask?
Absolutely, sure.
Order, but Dr. Johnson Marcus is here, so maybe hello, and I don't know if you want to address this issue at all any further.
Good afternoon, or good after, good evening, what is time in 2020 y'all? Hey folks, hey Mayor, hey Council, thanks for allowing me to speak to this issue. As mentioned, the youth group came to speak to the Human Relations Commission at our December meeting and they were fabulous, full of energy. I appreciate the work that they have done to raise this issue for us here in our community. And as Human Relations Commission, we are committed to following through with our promise to them that we are going to look into incorporating and thinking more about the Lenape people as we do our work as a Human Relations Commission. I would encourage them to stay engaged with us because we have found some successful partnerships in our events over the course of the year. The Ally series we've had, we've partnered with outside folks to do that. So we would encourage this group to continue working with us, to put together programming over the next year, reaching out to Lenape people in the area who would be willing to come and participate in our events. Hopefully as we get this COVID pandemic underhand a little bit better and we gather in person, we can actually gather together to continue our learning and figure out what's the best way to honor the people of this land.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I appreciate you for, for joining us tonight. And out of order, now we're going back to order. Councilwoman Rasmussen, you may continue with your report, I apologize and thank you for your time.
Oh, that's, that's fine. So, um, the, I talked to Kathy, who's a director of the Senior Center, obviously we have not been having meetings, but I wanted to remind our seniors that there is a Zoom, Zumba class on Tuesdays. And if you are not in on it already, you need to leave a message with Kathy at the Senior Center or send an email. She will send you the link so that you can be on the Zumba exercise Zoom. So that's something, not by invitation only, but I mean, it's not out in the public so that anyone could get on and maybe disturb it like has happened to us and other people on Zoom meetings. So if you want to get some exercise in, contact the Senior Center, just leave a message and Kathy will get back to you. And also the same with the art teacher. The art teacher has been doing Zoom art lessons and that's on Thursdays. And you also have to contact Kathy for that, so she could get you the right meeting ID and everything for the art lessons. So things are being done and we're being as careful as we can with our seniors to keep them safe. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Rasmussen. Councilman Pagel, are you talking now? Do you want us, do you want us to skip you and bring you to the end? Or do you want to go now?
Yeah, I'll go to the end, yeah, I'm sure there aren't much.
We'll give the honor of going last today. Councilman Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. The next pool commission is, meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, December 16th at 8:00 PM via Zoom. The information can be found on the website and all social media. We also recently finished collecting opinions from our community via survey, which was posted in various locations on social media and on the website. And I'm pleased to announce that we have received 807 responses to that survey, which is incredible. And the pool commission will be looking at the data to determine trends and hopefully have some guidance as the pool commission moves forward. And I also wanted to address the Indigenous Peoples' issue. There's, in the letter that Kate McGrath wrote, she, she wrote that she recognizes that it could be a difficult process to help a town accept that their actions are harmful. And that struck me, because I don't know if the inclusion of Chief Matouchin is harmful. And I was going to suggest that, yes, the Matouchin Human Relations Commission's take on the task of evaluating that and I'm glad to hear that they're looking into that. So I just want to thank Dr. Johnson Marcus for, and, and her commission for that work. So look forward to, to hearing a response to that. Because I know that none of us need, mean to be harmful, but we, with the understanding that it could be, it could be harmful without even knowing it, so.
And, and Councilman, then one of the reasons that that's such an important question to answer, obviously, is because to my knowledge, none of us here are in a position, obviously necessarily, to speak to that as Caucasians. But what's also was so important to me that Chief Ira Zari reached out and spoke to the Nanticoke Lenape representatives. You know, the state recognized, I believe, five tribes of Lenape in New Jersey. And the Nanticoke Lenape is one of them. And the chief of Lenape tribe, the Nanticoke tribe spoke to our chief. And the conversation among chiefs led to this conversation and dialogue with Dr. Norwood, who is a spokesperson and a very prestigious spokesperson for, for this group. And that helped me feel better about some of what you're describing. But, you know, the other thing that's so hard with this is that, you know, there's so many, there'll be so many, you know, diversion opinions. You'll always have somebody who, and, and even Dr. Norwood would say, you know, that he can't speak on behalf of everyone. But, you know, your job in government, and I appreciate your acknowledgement of this issue, is to try to do the most good. And so we're trying to do the most good here. And, and we don't want to act, as I said, reflexively. We want to act reflectively, we want to consider what we're doing, we want to be deliberative. And one thing's for sure, that we really want to honor our past and we want to honor the people that were here before us. And that's, that's, I think we're all on the same page on, and how we do that is up for grabs. But let's, let's do it deliberatively, carefully, and not just make, you know, reflexive decisions.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Councilman Delia?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quick, I've already had both of my committee meetings for this year, so I just wanted to, I thank them personally, but I just want to thank them publicly, all of my volunteers that participate in the transportation and the TV and Technology Committees for another great year and, and donating and volunteering their time to the borough. I did want to remind folks that the TV and Technology Committee is always and actively interested in getting feedback and hearing about things along lines of price increases specifically this year related to Optimum slash Altice. You can get in touch with me directly if you have concerns about those things. You know, we're sort of limited for sure on what we can do, but we are engaged in conversations with Congressman Cologne about potential price increases by, by Altice. And we're trying to collect as much information as we can. So my email address is jdelia@matouchin.com, that's just the letter J, D E L I A, at matouchin.com. And if you have anything like that, I'd love to hear about it. And just finally, the, I, I want to also thank and acknowledge the folks that, that came on tonight, that sent all the emails in from the Dutch and Youth Recy and Racial Justice. It's so important that people participate in government. And I, I love to, to see their enthusiasm, this is how things can kind of move forward. It's great to hear that the Human Relations Commission is interested in working with them. And I really look forward to, you know, future programming that might, might come out of this. It's, it's just, you know, certainly it's, it's late here, it's 9:30, but I, and I think I speak for everyone, love to have that community involvement in our meetings, we don't get it enough. So thank you.
Well said, Councilman, thank you. All right, Councilman Pagel, last but not least.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, Council Mayor. I'm going to keep this as brief as possible, obviously understanding that this is definitely not going to be the last time I speak at one of these meetings, right? Who am I kidding? My plan is to call into every single one, just as I've, I'm still on the council without any of the restrictions here. I'm better off the cuff, but I did take notes just to make sure that I, I, I address everything and everyone. It's been a true pleasure serving with all of you and serving the people of Matouchin for the past three and a half years. And I really look forward, as, as Councilwoman Rubin said, to continuing, you know, advocating as I, as I leave the council as a resident, you know, working with the groups like, like Walk Matouchin, Matouchin Downtown Alliance, Students for Youth Justice, which I'll, I'm going to talk a little bit about in a second. But before I do that, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Councilwoman Rasmussen, Dorothy, you and I met about eight or nine years ago when I come, came to complain about a shade tree. Nora and I, we came to the shade tree meeting and, and she contacted me literally hours later asking if Nora and I both wanted to join. She's lucky, you guys are all lucky that Nora didn't join because she'd probably be on the council right now and she's someone to reckon with, who's right behind me. And I can't thank you enough, Dorothy, for all your, all your guidance, your advocacy for, for the environment, for the shade trees, and hopefully you'll take over that, that commission. But thank you, if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be involved. You got me on as a, as a Democratic Committee person. You brought me to all the events, you introduced me to everybody and anybody who was somebody, so, so thank you so much. Linda, Council President Kaskowski, your passion for this is unbelievable. And you're, you're so effective in, in this role as Council President and you've been so effective on the council the last two terms now, right? It's just unbelievable. And, and I can't thank you enough for all those, those kind words that you said, you know, in the beginning. Just the fact that I've, you know, I've had that impact on you and, and that you're going to continue to advocate for some of those things is, is really, really, you know, meaningful for me and, and I thank you for that. And it's just, it's just a pleasure always hanging out with you and, and, you know, spending time with you and talking with you. And I, and I know that Matouchin's in phenomenal hands with you at the helm of the council. Sorry, page two. SRR, Councilwoman Rubin, my, my birthday buddy, and I know the mayor likes to bring this up. We, it's very strange that, that Councilwoman Rubin and I both have the same birthday. That's very, very strange. Yes, thank you for those kind words in the beginning. Again, I can't thank you enough for your advocacy. I'm directly being impacted by things that you and the Accessibility Commission have accomplished in Matouchin. You know, my family is better off because of things that you and your committee have done to make Matouchin more accessible to people. And, and that's, that's a real true testament to you and, and to, you know, what you've been always fighting for. And I look forward to working with you and for you to continue fighting for those things. Because, yeah, we need to design our town for, for our most vulnerable residents, right? And I think that's, that's what we need to do. So thank you, Sherri Rose, for that. Dan, it's been a real pleasure, buddy. You know, I, the, the, the thing that stands out in my mind was we had a Zoom meeting with the Democratic Committee a couple, in the beginning of the pandemic, and, and Dan mentioned the, the four E's, engineering, enforcement, like I can't even remember off the top of my head. And, and, thanks, thanks, and education. And you, Jason and I were driving down to the new council person meeting, I think I skipped it, sorry Susan, my first year. And, and we were talking about kind of what you wanted to, you know, accomplish on the council. And to hear you say that, and then to hear you speak with me at a council meeting about, you know, getting electric trash trucks, you know, I, I really thank you for that and I'm looking forward to all the great things that you.
And police.
And police, that you have done. So thank you and good luck. To Tyler Candell, who's going to be taking over, good luck, buddy. I'll be here, I know you're not listening, but I wanted to thank you. Excited that someone stepped up to run for council, it's not the easiest job. And I'm, and I'm looking forward to anything I can do to help you as well. Jay Muldoon, I know you're not on anymore, you should be on, we're paying him to be on, but he's not on anymore, so I'm going to keep it, keep it nice. Again, Jay and Ron Grzel have been mentors to me. And in this position, it's, it's not always easy to be a mentor. And I, and I can't thank you enough for all your guidance these last couple of years for what you're doing from a touching behind the scenes has been phenomenal. Thank you so much. Geez, the long list here, sorry. Susan, thank you. That's all I'm going to say, just because you want me to be short, but it's been a pleasure. I love to come into your office and chatting with you with my kids in the, in the, in the lobby. You've done some phenomenal things from a touching and you're always a great supporter of all of us and I really appreciate your, everything you've done. Melissa, it's been a, a true pleasure. I'm really, really excited to see what you can do when there's not a global pandemic in Matouchin. I know you're going to do amazing, amazing things and I look forward to working with you and advocating with you for all those great things. Mayor Jonathan, thank you so much for those kind words in the beginning. I, I couldn't, you are at the helm of this. You know, we joked when we found out that Pete was, you know, was, was going to be working for the governor. And the only person that popped to my mind was you to be the mayor. And, and I'm glad it was because you've just been, you know, you've been phenomenal. Your vision from a touching is second to none. You look at that 50,000 foot view and, and you do a great job with it, you're connecting with people. You have big ideas for this town and this town's going to be better off, you know, with you as the mayor. It is better off with you as the mayor and it's going to be better off when, when you leave as well. So thank you for, for everything that you do. Pete Camerano, I know he's not on, but I'd like to thank Pete again, without him, I wouldn't be in this position. He called me in Ireland at the middle of the night and asked me to run for council and I agreed. So I can't thank him enough. The Shade Tree Commission, Historical Preservation Commission Committee, excuse me. I'm, I'm, you know, obviously biased, but I think they're the two best committees in town. They've done so much, they've planted hundreds and hundreds of trees. They've, they've, you know, saved historical homes, they've, they've pushed the conversation on historical housing. It's, it's been really amazing and they are phenomenal, phenomenal volunteers and they spend hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours to doing this. So thank you all for them. I'm going to call it the Transportation Dream Team. Tom Rockefeller, Sean Massey, Alan Johnson and Evan Styler. You guys have spent countless hours, hundreds of hours with Jason and I and countless beers discussing, you know, how to make our town safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. And, and I'm really excited for your, for your advocacy and to continue to work with you. Isaac Kramer as well, he's done a phenomenal job at Downtown Alliance. Always has been a great, great sounding board for any of the ideas that I had when it comes to the downtown. And he's a super, super phenomenal resource for anything and everything downtown. So I'm very, very happy to have worked with him and, and really enjoyed working with him and seeing what our downtown has become just in the last three years has been phenomenal. And then, last but not least, Jason, what can I say, brother? This is where I'm going to get choked up the most. You started working on my campaign by organizing a spreadsheet for, for our signs. And I knew right there, just by your dedication and, and the way that you think that you were going to be a fine addition to this council. So anytime there was an open seat, I always, you know, I was always pushing for you. And I know you're going to continue to fight and you are getting one of the most effective legislators I've ever met. And I know you're going to continue to be super effective. And I, and I'm leaving with, with another phenomenal friend, but a best friend as well. So thank you for, for all that you do from a touching and super happy about that. And then finally, my family, my wife's listening, so I'm going to be super nice. I come home at night from work, I come home from council meetings and I just talk and we just talk about Matouchin and what we can do better. Uh, Nora, she's been my sounding board for the past three years. Uh, she's honest, not only tells me what I want to hear, um, but it's, it's been amazing having her and not easy running for election and serving on a council with two young kids and a wife that works and a, and a husband that works. Um, so I can't thank her enough and I know she's excited for this next part. And obviously my kids as well, uh, they loved it. You know, every time I came home from a council meeting, they were always there waiting, uh, to give me a hug. Um, so it's, it's been phenomenal and I'm getting yelled at now for, for not being in bed with them. Uh, I'm a better person for serving the people of Matouchin and for serving with, with all of you. Here she is in the background. Um, I'm coming babe, one minute, wrapping it up. Uh, and, and I just hope that, uh, I've left this town a better place. Because, you know, I think that's all, that's always what we're here for, right? To make this, make what we're doing, uh, better, to improve the town for, for everybody. Um, and, and I, and I think that's something that we have done, uh, everyone on this council, everyone on this screen right now has done, including, uh, Chris, Grace, who's still on, um, Dennis, always great to, you, you've always been a, a great sounding board as well and yelled at me sometimes when I probably violated some requests, Oprah things or things of that nature. Um, and, and that's the best part about this is to know that I, I can walk away, um, you know, knowing that all of you are going to continue all of this fight and that I can be involved with all of you. Uh, and I'm probably going to rub you the wrong way at some points, uh, but get used to that as a, as a, as a resident. Um, and I'm excited for that. Um, that, thanks you all, the friends I've made through Democratic Committee. Everyone just serving the town, speaking with people, learning about them, uh, has been phenomenal. Um, and I, and I've been truly grateful for this and I, and I wish, uh, the, the situation was different. I can continue to serve longer, uh, but everything happens for a reason. And, uh, the, the people of Matouchin should know that they have a phenomenal group of people leading them, uh, truly, truly phenomenal. Uh, and I'm looking forward to all of the great things that you all are going to accomplish, uh, and I hope to be, uh, to be a part of that. So thank you all. I'm just going to turn off my computer at this point, I think. And I look forward to the party that the mayor's going to throw for me when we can all gather in person.
You got it.
Thank you all.
Yeah, you got it.
Merry Christmas, happy.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. Ms. Pearlstein?
Just happy holidays to everybody. Good luck, Todd.
Thank you, Melissa.
If, if, if I'm, I just may, just for the record, Councilman Pagel was only kidding about me yelling at him for violating. And that's the extent of my report.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mayor. I, I got, well, I'm really, really sorry. I, I had a laundry list. I really, I couldn't thank, um, the Dutch and Police Department, they've been phenomenal. We have some great officers, um, looking forward to continue to work with them. Uh, but also DPW, I know we, we, we sing their praises all the time, uh, but they are phenomenal, uh, especially Brian Lewis. Um, every, all of them are phenomenal, but Brian and I, we have, you know, you know, he's, he's, I consider him a great friend, uh, but he's also a phenomenal, phenomenal employee, um, and a great, great asset to this town. Um, and the things that he does for, for our residents is phenomenal. So, um, sorry. Thank you. Thanks, Brian, for everything.
Okay, so, uh, with that, I'll just, speaking of DPW, I'll just say on my report that we are ready for the snowstorm. We are, we are like, we don't, pandemic, no pandemic, we don't care. We're ready for snowstorms here. So, um, I've had a conversation earlier today with our, our Borough Administrator. It will be her first snowstorm, uh, as Borough Administrator. Yay. Um, but, uh, listen, you know, this town, I say it every year and Fred will kill.
Compared to the pandemic.
Yeah, please, come on, just throw it on top. No big deal. We can do it. Um, but we've never done, you know, the, the, the plow job with the pandemic, but we'll figure it out as we always do. And I'm proud of this town, how hard everyone's working. Uh, this spike has hit us hard. So let's just hope that we can, um, you know, obviously people behave themselves and do what they're supposed to do in the holidays and we can get through this, uh, in a way. And hopefully you all can appreciate this Zoom format and you can hang out with each other a little more through this as opposed to in person because outside is cold and the air isn't as, uh, isn't as thick as it is during the summer and the droplets don't go down. You know, people can get sick more likely outside these days together, certainly without a mask. But, um, you know, talking to each other by Zoom is just a better way if possible. Again, it's not in person, we get that, but, um, indoor gatherings are, are, are a big problem. And so we just have to try to limit those. With that, new business consent agenda, Council President?
Okay, um, at this time I'd like to move to approve new business consent agenda resolutions twenty twenty dash two fifty-eight through two eighty-nine.
Is it a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilman Pagel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, other new business?
Okay, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash ninety, which is the resolution authorizing the payment of the bill list, which is in the amount of eight million, three hundred, twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we ask for a motion to adjourn, and I would ask that, that be made by Councilman Pagel as opposed to a second this time. Um, I'm just going to, we, we are having conversations about the reorg meeting. And, uh, everyone should know that we are likely to have a virtual reorg meeting at this point. And, um, I haven't yet spoken to, uh, Councilman Hirsch or Councilman-elect, uh, Candell about this. But, you know, there, we, we're going to have to figure out a swearing in probably, uh, that's not virtual, somewhere maybe outs, outdoors. Um, and then maybe, you know, obviously you want to limit the crowd size there, but if you want to be there with your families and take pictures, that's one way to do it. Uh, again, this is another new frontier for us. We'll figure it out. But, uh, reorg's not going to look the same. I did offer to give my speech separate from the reorg meeting just because, uh, I know you can all sometimes be bored by it, but Linda's forcing me to do it that day. So it looks like that part will be at least the same. Um, so, uh, we look forward to seeing you all during the reorg meeting on, on New Year's Day. How it happens, just stay tuned for information on the borough's, uh, website and, and Facebook page and, and Twitter. With that, Councilman Pagel, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
You had a motion from Councilman Pagels or a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dorothy, what's your dog's name?
Oh, this one is Bingo. I have two puppies. I've been, you know, these are my new dogs and they've been like chewing on my furniture and everything while I've been at, at my meeting.
All right.
And there's my other one. I have another one too.
How does Bingo vote then?
Bingo votes to, um, adjourn because he wants a treat. And this is Ellie.
Furniture, okay Bingo?
Yes, and this is Ellie.
All right, and Ellie, Ellie, who's, okay, Ellie, that's Ellie, okay.
That's James's dog.
Oh, I see, okay. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Bye, everybody.
Happy holidays, everybody. Thanks all. Good to miss you.
Holidays. Bye, Todd.
Bye.
Bye, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.